Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular board meeting on October sixteenth, two thousand and seven. It is five thirty PM and we are here at nineteen hundred Price Road. Ever since the Texas pledge was changed some time ago, there's been a little confusion when we recited. Because of that, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Drew Brown to go ahead and lead us right on two and three. She'll be speaking it very loudly in the microphone so we can follow along and catch those changes. Mrs. Brown?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. Please rise for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Former teacher of mine, English. Still remember those good old days. Moving on to item four, roll call. Let the record reflect that Mr. Lehman did call. He will be. He's running a little late, and so is Mr. Aguilar. Everyone else... I'm sorry, Mr. Cortez, I apologize. Everyone else is present. Item six, recommend approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of October the second, two thousand and seven. Right. Item five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meeting of August, of October sixteenth, two thousand and seven, with any corrections. Well, I'm starting off a little rough today, aren't I? Okay. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. Yes, submitted.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion by Mrs. Galvane, seconded by Mr. Aguilar. All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Now, item six, recommend approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of October two, two thousand and seven, with any corrections, any corrections on the minutes of October the second. If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion by Mrs. Galvane, seconded by Mr. Parrish. All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to superintendent's report, conference presentations. One, presentation of education leadership program proposal of UTB. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. We presented this at the curriculum committee meeting. We briefly did a presentation on this, and we're gonna expand it a little bit. Ms. Fox has been working with the university, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Fox, and she'll introduce those people that are here from the university to give us a better perspective of what the program's looking like. Ms. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. As Mr. Gonzalez said, this information was presented at the curriculum committee. We're looking to expand our pool of applicants for assistant principals, and in working with the university, they've proposed to develop a program that will not only assist us in that, but also assist them. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Nick Vallado and Dr. Michelle Avadigal to make a brief presentation regarding the proposed proposal. Dr. Vallado?
Just to warn the president, members of the board, and Mr. Gonzalez, members of his staff, briefly, we just wanted to say that this summer, we received an exceeding number of phone calls from your campus administrators asking if we had any names to recommend for assistant principal positions. And of course, this was kinda midsummer or late summer, and he said, "Well, at the beginning, we had, but since the ISD does not, at that time, did not honor any temporary probationary certificates, we had recommended those people to other districts." And of course, later on, we found out that Brownsville did change its policy. The adminis... Our professors and education administration, we met, and we got together and we put a proposal that we shared with the superintendent and Ms. Fox whereby the education administration program would offer two courses in the spring semester, two in the summer, summer one, two in summer two, and then offer the ILD and PDAS in between as continuing education courses. And conceivably, we could have anywhere between twenty and twenty-five persons that would be eligible for a probationary certificate, used to be a temporary certificate, and could be ready for a position if employed or offered a position by the district. The requirement is simply that they must be, of course, part of the pool that the district would pick, and also must be eligible to apply and be admitted into the graduate school. Our professors would assist the group in the process, GRE and the paperwork necessary for that, and we would tailor the courses to a time that would be of benefit and mutually acceptable to the persons. Like to make it clear that this would be at no cost to the district, and also would be obviously no cost to the university, other than we would be the recipients, obviously, of their tuition, and you would be the recipient of the trained, future administrators. We are ready to assist in any way we can, and somehow word has spread out, and we've gotten calls from McAllen and from other areas, so we want to, first of all, offer this opportunity to BISD, and as such, would be the only pilot program that we would have. Later on, perhaps in next year, we would extend the same offer to other districts. But right now, we're just simply approaching BISD, and we stand ready to answer any of your questions that you may have. If... Let me just say in conclusion that it's nice to see some of our former students here, and it's always nice to come back and chat with them a little bit. And so, Mr. Board President and Mr. Superintendent, thank you so much. If you have any questions for us, we'd be delighted to answer.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Parrish?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, Ms. Gonzalez, and Dr. Vallado. According to the program, which I love the program, it gets our teachers getting involved to be the administrator. You got here, between twenty and twenty-five, will be selected by BISD. Are there gonna be room for more than twenty-five, if possible?
That would be... We'd have to work it out, because there are only five professors, and we have to, you know, take care of the other ones also. So conceivably, you could have more than a pool of twenty to twenty-five, because there's some in the pipeline right now that are taking the courses, and once that you have opened up the door for probationary, temporary certificates, you should be able to have more. Now, if there is a great... greater need for more than that, we would have to discuss that, and we would see if we could not accommodate. I know that I've had some offers from very qualified individuals to assist as adjuncts, and we certainly would consider that, and some of these are obviously from BISD and other districts.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, and first, it's nice to see you again, Dr. Vallado. He's my former instructor, like some of us here at BISD. I think it's a wonderful program, Dr. Vallado, and in fact, at the curriculum committee, we made a comment that perhaps we could do the same thing with counselors. It seems to be there's a great need of counselors in the school district, and of course, this is not directed to you, because I think it's a great program. However, during the curriculum committee, Dr. Escobedo, there were several comments that we're concerned about, not basically... directly to the program, but rather as to who would be chosen by the principals. We were talking about that perhaps the principal or the district itself must set a certain criteria to select those that would be participating in the program, because we don't wanna send the wrong message to all these people. We have a great pool of assistant prin... well, let's say educators have mid-management that are graduate of the same program, UTB in Brownsville, they still have not been hired. So as a district, we just gotta make sure we are not sending the wrong message to those that are potential, someday would like to become administrators. But as for the program itself, I know it would give us a larger pool of candidates, and of course, that would give us a much better opportunity to select our best administrators.
Publicly, I would like to say that in discussing this with the superintendent, that this in no way would guarantee anybody a position, but it would provide a pool of already-trained individuals that would be ready to be recommended for a certificate. Now, the certification rules have changed. In the past, we would... we were able to offer or recommend a person to TEA for a probationary certificate based on the completion of a certain amount of courses. This is no longer the case. The universities now cannot recommend anybody for a probationary certificate unless they have a job offer. So it's kinda like a catch-22. You will not employ unless they have a certificate. We will not recommend unless they have an offer of employment, but I think that this could be worked out by, if the district is serious about a candidate and would offer them a job, by presenting a letter of offer of employment, then I think if they've met all the other requirements, we would proceed to recommend them for a probationary certificate.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mrs. Galvane?
That's a former student of Dr. Vallado's and Dr. Avadigal. Welcome. I did wanna say that I'm so happy that we're working really closely with the university. We always like that feeling of being close and being able to work with you, and I really wanna thank you for giving our educators the opportunity to be part of a cohort. We are growing as a district, and we are gonna need administrators, so thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Let me just add, we now are fully staffed. We have five full-time professors. Some of you may remember Ms. Ayala or someone like that. When I started, we only had one, and of course, he retired, and I replaced that gentleman, Dr. Thompson, and for a while, we only had one. Then we grew it into two, three, four, and now we have five, and who knows, you know, where. But we're always... I personally have always been of the belief that we need to collaborate with the districts, because after all, particularly Brownsville, you're our biggest, you know, supplier of students, and we would like to be in a position to assist, like we are giving you the opportunity for this particular cohort group.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. You know, when we did present this to the curriculum committee, we did hear what the committee members were saying, and we took it to heart. And we are going to develop some criteria for the selection process. Of course, you either have to be nominated or self-nominated to be able to... and then we'll set up a certain criteria to do this. But I do wanna bring something to the whole board, as they say, and to the general public, concerning the vacancy. We currently have six vacancies. Applicants from BISD are six that have applied to be assistant principals. There were told of thirteen applicants. The other seven are from... out of BISD, and out of those six that are wanting to be assistant principals, two want transfers, basically, from one administrative position to the other. So even if they got it, that means another administrative position would be left vacant. So this would just give us a better pool to draw from. I do wanna say that for all those teachers that are out there that are thinking about becoming administrators, in the very near future, when we open up the three elementaries, the middle school and the high school, it's going to have a tremendous impact on administration. We're going to need a large number of assistant principals, between twenty and twenty-seven is what I estimate, because some of the... those are gonna need principals too, those schools. So when I promote assistant principals to principals, it's going to create vacancies in the assistant principalship. So the better pool we have, I think the better we can be for BISD. And so if those teachers are interested, they can self-nominate themselves. Certainly, I've talked to Dr. Vallado, and that, you know, this is just a cohort. They're also more than welcome to join the regular program at UTB, and to be able to get into that pool will give them equal value. This is just something to... for a cohort to be able to work together and be able to get the classes that they need in a timely manner. And, you know, but we will bring it, and we'll send it out to the board once we develop all the criteria. I just wanted to bring it up to the board and see if we had a favorable response in going into this area.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Dr. Vallado, it was a pleasure having you meet earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Board President, the superintendent, and like one man once said, muy agradecido, muy agradecido, muy agradecido.
Thank you. Dr. Avadigal, thank you, Ms. Fox.
Hello, Vargas.
Item two, presentation of principals' evaluation. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. This is a presentation, and of course, it has an action item attached to it under consent agenda, but it gives you the opportunity to ask questions. As we went through this new evaluation of principals, it really hasn't changed much. We've added an area, which is student performance, and that's the key area. I wanna say that this was carefully reviewed. Principals have reviewed it already. They have accepted it. It's part of the whole program that's there for principals' evaluation. I think it gives you a better outlook on the principalship, and the ones that have been really working closely with it is our human resources. I'll turn it over to Ms. Fox to elaborate a little bit on this. Ms. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. As Mr. Gonzalez said, the principals' evaluation is pretty much the same, the same domain... eight domains that have always been there. As you look on page nineteen through twenty-two in your materials, you'll see the commissioner's rule that requires that we have a domain nine, which includes the academic excellence indicators and the performance objectives. To point out to you just a couple of changes, all of domains one through eight are the same in both elementary, middle school, and high school. There is a domain nine, which includes the campus accountability rating, the AYP or the adequate yearly progress preliminary report, their campus attendance, the tax commended performance, and then the summary of all their tax scores. That is across the board for all elementary, middle school, and high school principals. In addition to that, for the middle school, we've added one additional indicator, which is their dropout rate, which will be part of that, which is also part of the AYP. And then at the high school level, we have the one indicator added, which is the completion rate that we're all familiar with. This is... must be by law adopted by the board as the evaluation instrument. As Mr. Gonzalez said, the principals had input as we developed this. The area assistant superintendents have met with the principals. I've met with every single principal myself in reference to this. Everybody seems to be understanding of the process. Last night, it was presented to the DEIC, and all of them were also in agreement. A couple of them said they were glad they weren't principals last night at the DEIC, but they were glad that this was a principals' instrument. So the requirement of the accountability of the campus for the principal is included in this, and if you've reviewed these documents, that's all in there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three, presentation of Brownsville Independent School District financial report for the period ended August the thirty-first, two thousand and seven. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you. I just wanna point out one thing in this report, and then turn it over for questions, and Mr. Sanchez will be glad to answer any questions. But if you look at page sixty-seven, you don't have to really look at it. I wanna point out something, expenditures versus revenues. As of August thirty-first, we had expenditures of almost sixty-six million dollars, and we had revenues of about ten and a half million dollars. That's what's come in. So you see, there's a difference there of about fifty-five million. This is why it's very important to have a healthy fund balance to be able to cover that, because we don't get any money in August. We don't get our first disbursement from the state until September. So if we don't have money in our fund balance, in our savings account, to cover this, then we won't be able to cover the paychecks for all personnel. So by doing... keeping a healthy fund balance that we do have, it makes us be able to be flexible and be able to cover those fifty-five million until the money comes in in September, and then we catch up, and anything goes well from there. I just wanted to point that out. If you're wondering why those numbers are there.
Questions, comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Item five, presentation on monthly report of the BISD bond oversight... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Item four, presentation of the school first rating for June thirtieth, two thousand and six. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. This is a very important rating for us, and, you know, I'm not gonna take any thunder away from our chief financial officer. He really works hard at this, and has gotten a superior rating, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Sanchez to give this presentation, 'cause I think it's really something that we need to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobedo, board members. Before I do, though, you know, the credit goes to the administrators that I've been blessed to work with, and I'd like for them to at least come up here. You know, we always recognize a lot of other folks, but we never recognize some of these folks, so I'm gonna call on them to come up here, and then I'll make a short presentation on some of the key elements and some of the changes, and then, you know, I'll answer any questions that you may have. I'd like to introduce Tony Fuller, administrator for budget. Tony, have you come up here?
All right, Tony.
Ken Widmore, he does employee benefits and risk management. Stay up here. Right in the middle, Tony, so everybody can see you.
Get on the camera.
Oscar Tapia Facility. Robert Reese Finance. Mary Garza Payroll. Dante Gerina Teams. Oscar Lopez, Student Accounting. Kenneth Lee, Warehouse Textbooks, Fixed Assets. And I have a couple of other folks that are up in Austin doing some in-service. Valda Islas, Buy-Tech Specialist, and Rosie Penya, Administrator for Purchasing. These are the folks that really have earned the superior rating for the last five years. You know, they are the folks that are behind the trenches and make all of these elements that we're gonna be talking about possible, so I take my hat off to them. So let's give them another round.
Go ahead, finish up.
I was gonna say, when are they coming for us to...
Oh, okay, sure, sure. Ah, guys.
So, yeah. Let us congratulate you.
Just like we do with everybody else, they come around here, and then we shake your hand. Come on.
Go ahead.
Come on.
I just am watching.
You have a packet, and I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things that I think may be of interest to, not just for the folks here, but on the TV audience and people who may be looking at this. And so I wanna highlight a couple of those criteria that we're judged on. Criteria number six, or indicator six, was... the question is, was the percent of total tax collections greater than ninety-six percent? That's important, because that's usually what drives some of the funding formulas for the state, and we're... last year, we had ninety... or the year before, oh-five, oh-six, we had ninety-four point seventy-eight percent. This past year, we had ninety-nine percent collection. So a tremendous increase, thanks to the people who collect our taxes. Of course, of interest is, you know, that the requirement, which is indicator eleven, the requirement has... is gradually moving up to the sixty-five percent thing. Well, we, in oh-four, oh-five, we were at fifty-five percent dollars in instruction. This past... or in oh-five, oh-six, we were at fifty-five point eight. This year, current year, we're around sixty-one percent, and we have to be at sixty-five this current year. So we're gradually, you know, meeting the standard as it's supposed to be, and hopefully we'll get there this year. So we're doing really well there. I know one of interest, and this one really, even I was a little bit surprised, but I'm gonna... indicator fifteen, and we hear about our district top-heavy, and, you know, administratively. Well, in oh-four, oh-five, a district our size, in administrative costs, should be about eleven percent, eleven point zero-five percent. In oh-four, oh-five, we were at seven percent. On oh-five, oh-six, we went down. The standard still remained the same, eleven point oh-five, but we get down to six point nine-three. So, you know, we're still a few percentage points in the administration to try to be there what the standard is for a district our size. So we're doing really well in the glass palace, as they say, and so we're really doing well in terms of that percentage. Indicator sixteen, which is of interest to the faculty and administration at the campus level, was the ratio of students to teachers within the range for a district our size. Okay? For our district our size, per teacher, we should have a ratio no less than thirteen-five and no greater than twenty-two to one. Brownsville ISD has fifteen point five-eight. So the low range is thirteen point five, we're at fifteen point eight. So we're somewhere a little bit above the lower part of that range. Indicator seventeen, which is... tells us the big picture, the story about all our staffing in the district. Well, in that... an indicator seventeen says, what is the ratio of total staff to total employees of the district? A district our size, the low range is six point six to one, with a limit of fourteen. Here's where we're a little closer to the lower range. Six point six, we're at seven point zero. So we're... in other words, what does that indicator say? We may be getting to where we have a little overstaffing as a whole. Of interest also is, one that, of course, they keep asking, and people keep writing us up, but you know, I guess I could say, but it's my own personal feeling. We failed this one two years in a row, and I'm glad we failed it. And I say that because purposely, we have been able to run the district, to serve the campuses, the departments with the needs, and yet, people write us up because we have too much fund balance. But we built schools, we... the board has just approved, for example, a fourteen million dollar to build another campus with local resources, not having to shift that burden of taxes to the taxpayers. So... and the superintendent alluded to a minute ago in your financials, that here is an instance where, you know, in one month, we'd have to come up with fifty-five thousand dollars. So when...
Five million.
I mean, fifty-five million, I'm sorry. Dropped a few zeros there. Not like me to do that, but... But anyway, it just goes to show you that even though we'd received a no... and I think one of the ways that other districts have been able to capture this one, is as you have done this year, is to designate. As long as the board designates a specific purpose, you'll bring that percentage down, and you will get a yes on this one, and anything the board designates, it can undesignate. So I would just wanted to throw those couple of items at you, so that you can have some talking points tomorrow morning for coffee. So I will answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments from the board? Mrs. Galvane?
Just another congratulations on your rating. Really proud of you. A lot of hard work, and I was worried about that instructional part, the sixty-five percent, but it seems like you have a hand on it, and glad to see that and hear that.
And we run our numbers for this coming year already, and we're monitoring it.
Any other comments or questions? If not, congratulations to all of our financial staff, Mr. Sanchez and everybody else, and Mr. Aguilar. That was a great idea of having them come, so we can personally congratulate them and shake their hands. I heard one of them say, "I won't say who, Mr. Tapia," and all these years here, this was the first time that he had the opportunity to come and shake the board's hand. You know, it was my privilege to shake yours, so thank you all very much, and we were able to do this for the fifth consecutive year in a row, and that is excellent coffee talk, in my opinion. Moving on to item five, presentation on monthly report of the BISD bond oversight committee. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. At this time, I think Mr. Bush Barbosa will be here to present for the bond oversight committee. Mr. Barbosa?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Board President, members of the board, don't have much to report this month. You know, we didn't have our regular meeting, was reset for this coming month, so the only thing that I have to report for you is that Terry Ray has resigned from the board... from the bond committee due to health reasons, and just to inform the superintendent, because our bylaws require that we notify him, so that he can notify the individual board member that appointed him, so they can... board member that appointed him, so they can appoint a new member to the board. So, other than that, you know, that's all we have, and if you have any questions that you may like to give us, or directions, or anything, we're here to do it.
Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, I just wanna thank the committee for the hard and dedicated work that you do for us. You're a tremendous asset to our community, and also to our school district. And I'll keep our prayers for Mr. Ray.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any other comments on the board? I also echo the gratitude to, for all your members for the time that you invest to this committee. I know that most of us are not looking for extra activities to participate in, so thank you. If nothing else, we move on to item six, Board Calendars, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. Just a few highlights concerning what's coming up this month. This coming Saturday, if you have the opportunity, go to Donna High School for fixing, all our bands will be there, and we expect all Division One ratings when we come out of there. So, if you have an opportunity to go, go by Donna High School. I think they start in the early evening, about seven o'clock with the presentation, so if you can, go by there. You'll really enjoy our bands. Some have real good programs. Also, next week is National School Bus Safety Week. Have a chance to look at our bus drivers and thank them, and our bus department, have a chance to go by there and visit with them. You're more than welcome, as board members or the general public, just to go by and visit. I think a lot of times, they really appreciate you stopping by there. Also, it's Red Ribbon Week, Violence Prevention Week, so I'm asking all of you to join in any activities at schools. If the AAs can send this out to the board, to see what activities are going on at the campus, it would be, you can come by and see what's going on on the campuses. We'd be glad to have you there. Also, a very important date is the twenty-third. It's Tax Task Exit Level Re-Test. That's October twenty-third to the twenty-sixth. It's a very important date, so those of parents that are out there, if you have juniors or seniors, that have taken the test and they're gonna need to retake it, or even if you are out of school and you wanna come back and take the test, because you wanna get your high school diploma, please come by, and we'd be glad to help you out. Also, we have on November first, Brownsville Kids Voting. And we're very enthused about that. We always work very well with Kids Voting USA, so I wanted to bring that up. And then, I know it's a long ways away, but I want to just bring it up, so you can mark it on your calendars. On November, the week of November the twelfth, and also, general public, is National Children's Book Week. We invite you to go to their campuses, go to the libraries, and read to our kids. Be great to be there. So, if you wanna go, if you want an appointment, if you wanted to help you find a campus that wants you to read, we'd be glad to help you out. So, that's the week of November the twelfth. Those are some of the highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Questions, comments? Mrs. Galván?
I did wanna make one comment, and I've been looking at the website, our website, and it's just really nice to see on there, the little reminders, our calendar reminders, and it's been very impressive, so that parents in our community know what's going on, not only on our calendar here, but on the web.
Mrs. Galván, any other comments or questions? If not, then we move on to public audience. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is the time for citizen staff or students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of the meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you have comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and the subject matter of your comments must appear in a signing sheet, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments, and without due courtesy, I will strictly enforce that time limit. If a group of people wanna be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open forum by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint, meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if you comment in my judgment, constitute a complaint against an employee or an officer, I will interrupt you. I would ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the BISD formal grievance procedures, be that DGBA, FNG, or GF Local. With all cautiousness mine, I will not be glad to hear your comments. The first speakers are Robert and Ruth, I'm sorry, Sierra, Serra, and they'll be speaking of Down by the Border.
Yes, Dr. Escobedo and board members, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. We wanna invite you to the Second Annual Fall Festival for Down by the Border. Basically, it's an organization that I'm a member of, I'm sorry, my name is Robert Serra. And this organization was started three years ago to help kids and their parents that have Down Syndrome, or basically any physical handicap. And we've been very, very successful, and a lot of this has been attributed to BISD's cooperation. We've had a lot of volunteers from the BISD. The major ones have been Rebecca Rendon, Marsha Bencourt, Ramiro Trevino, and Estela Flores. And I understand that they have picked up about three hundred volunteers for our festival in two weeks. The festival is from nine to one. Last year, we had about three thousand people there, and that was our first annual. This year, we're expecting a few more. We've got a few more things for the children. Basically, the reason we're doing this is, like you all did a little earlier, recognize our children, and give the normal kids an opportunity to mingle with kids that have these special needs. We would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to use your marquees. Last year, we used them and had great success, because a lot of the kids saw them and were able to convince their mom and dad to bring them to the free festival. It is a free festival, there is no charge. We have bouncers, we have rock climbing, we have clowns, we have face painting, we have a little bit of everything, music, a little bit of everything for everyone. And we've got some posters here, that if you all are interested, we'd like to hand them out to you, and if you'll help us advertise, we'd love it. Just, thank you very much. We, oh, I'm sorry, we did forget one, I did forget one. We also, this year, we've added a one-mile walk and a five-mile tour, basically enjoying our new trail. And this, you can either register at Bicycle World, or there at the party. They are, we are charging five dollars. Five dollars is to cover the shirts, and really, the money will not be used to pay for the shirts, because the shirts were donated. We will use the money to donate it onto someone else, it's also gonna be helping kids. So, thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions or comments, be happy to answer them now.
Thank you, Mr. Serra. I've been to some of your functions, and I think it's great what you do. If you'd like, you can give your posters to a pad, and she'll let us have it.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Minerva Peña, Chess at BISD.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, and board members. My name is Minerva Peña, I'm sure most of you already know me, or heard about me. I've been working in the city for the last twenty-eight years. Today, I come to you in reference to chess at BISD. If you know, the chess program has been around for quite a few years. In fact, my child is now a sophomore at UTB, and he was in the chess program for ten years. Okay? The question that I have is, our funding for chess seems to be a little bit off balance, in the sense that sometimes, we have a chess committee, and they have proposals. The proposals go for the approval of the administration and of the board. So many proposals that have been brought into question, and the people have said, well, they've been proposed year after year after year, we've really never had any results. So, I'm here today to state that we really need your help, as board members. One of the proposals that they had was the fact that they wanted stipends for coaching, so where you can have a little more of a stipend for a coach, instead of them getting a thousand dollars for a twelve-month work, because it is twelve months to go around. And another thing is, funding more than seven children on the first, second, or third-place team. I know a lot of people don't believe in that, and they figure that seven is enough, but the last time we looked at sports, if you fund only the offense, and you don't take the defense, you're not gonna have much of a chance to get very far, when it's your turn to do defense. And this is what the other half of the kids do for the chess board, I mean, for the chess teams. I've got the proposals here, I can give a copy, and if you all can look at it, because it comes from the chess committee, and it says, the following proposals, three to six, deal with the budget, and therefore need administration and board approval. Proposal three, four, five, and six, three is the national funding, four is national funding for individuals, number five is district chess funds, and number six is coaches stipend. We really never got an answer where, how far this has gone, or where it is, at what level or stage it's at, being that it's been over ten years. Another thing also, I do appreciate very much that the superintendent is a hundred percent for the program, and I wanna thank him publicly, because this is, and I say it from my heart, the first superintendent that has done this with a great job. And I wanna thank him for that. I really believe that he works hard, he does excuse everyone for the chess program to go to a chess tournament. I would ask that they would get maybe field trip status, and not an absent, because the only time, if you look at my children, from pre-K to twelfth grade, the only time they've ever been counted absent, excused, was they were at a chess tournament. They didn't miss school. My kids have come to school with a sling. If the doctor can't see them in the afternoon, to heal, you know, to put a cast on their broken arm, because he's not gonna use it to ride, I tell him. And thank you that the district is safe enough that I feel comfortable sending my child to school, and he's gonna be safe, and it's happened. I would like to end this statement that I have with, ladies and gentlemen, on Saturday, the thirteenth, October thirteenth, two thousand and seven, there were four hundred and twenty-eight BISD students attending the Russell Chess Tournament. It takes discipline to be at school on Saturday from eight to four, instead of being at home sleeping or watching cartoons. The desire of these children to get better at chess, to learn, to conquer, achieve, is demonstrated by all these children as they work to develop their brain. Yet, more money is pumped into the ability to develop and produce with your brawn, instead of your brain. I know that chess is not a money-making for the district, but in the long run, it will produce citizens that will be money-makers for the community. This will help the citizens of Brownsville and its citizens prosper. Children from all walks of life, the haves and the have-nots, are playing on a level field, because everyone is born with a brain, and they can strive to succeed and to learn to live side by side, like ladies and gentlemen, whether they win, lose, or draw. This is the reason we desperately need your help and support and funding for the BISD chess program. One thing that I'm very proud of is that we can walk, it's an honor to walk into a state, national, regional tournament, and have everyone around the nation, the state, and the region, stand up and take notice that the Brownsville BISD students are in the house, because that's who they have to face, and they know they've got a tough battle. So, I, with my heart, ask you to support it, to look at the program a little closer. We have a lot of teachers that are doing this for free. We have several schools that have no coach, as I stand here before you, and those kids are out there by themselves, competing, and they're champions. And unless they get a coach, they have to dissolve that program. I ask you to help anyone who is willing to come and develop their brain, and learn how to get out of any corner they get into, to sit there for three hours and make a big mistake, and sit there and wanna die, and they hang on, and at the end, they come back and win the game. Well, see, that's what life's about, folks, to learn that if you make a mistake, you hang on, and it'll be rectified, and you will go on. And so, I really, really ask that you, from your heart, look into this program and fund it more, so that we can continue to produce the citizens that we're producing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. I appreciate your comments. Let the record reflect, Mr. Lehman has joined us, and Mr. Cortez is about to join us here momentarily.
Excuse me, I have copies of the proposals, if you'd like to have them, I apologize.
Sure, if you can just give them to a pad, she'll...
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Orlando C. Trevino, School Progress in General.
School Board President, Dr. Escobedo, Superintendent Hector Gonzalez, board members, administration, and public. Reason I'm here is because I saw the article on the Brownsville Herald, and I really thought it was very, very important. I saw, I wanna congratulate Mr. Cortez on his statement, because it is true. We got over fifty thousand students here, and for one person with his administration, and I'm gonna congratulate everybody, including board members. I'm talking teachers, administrators, bus drivers, food service, maintenance, secretaries, everybody. I congratulate principals, you name it, I congratulate all of y'all, including the board members. You're doing the self-evaluation as board members. You gotta give yourself an A-plus, because you chose the right man. The fact is, in a year's time, there was nineteen schools that were not passing federal. Right now, there's only six. That to me, tells me sixty-seven percent in a year. That is excellent. That means six to go. For you all, the superintendent, his administrations, and all his staff, that's a hop, skip, and a jump, you have to pat yourself on the back. You have chosen an excellent man, he's got excellent administration, he's got excellent people, he's got excellent principals. I mean, this is what I finally wanted to see. I wanted to see the school going forward, instead of backwards. Before, it was all negative. Now, it's starting to become positive. I really congratulate everybody, and when you all are looking at the evaluation of the superintendent, take a look at that sixty-seven percent jump. It isn't thirty, it isn't forty, it isn't fifty, sixty-seven percent, that means only thirty-three percent left. And thirty-three percent, to me, is nothing, because if he was able to take care of, and that, that's with everybody around him. When I say him, I'm talking his whole supporting staff. That means that the last thirty-three percent will be a hop, skip, and a jump. You have to pat yourselves on the back for having chosen the right person. I also want to congratulate all board members. I congratulate Mr. Cortez on his statement that he is underpaid. He is definitely underpaid, because a lot of the school districts with over fifty, sixty, seventy thousand kids, and that's where we're going to. Normally, would be divided into two school board members, two superintendents, and everything else. You're talking one person with his whole administrative staff, handling a huge, huge problem. I said, give him the rein on that military fleet, and he'll guide in the right direction, and that's exactly what he's done. Let's keep it going forward. Let's don't go backwards. Anybody that votes against progress, and that's what, that's exactly what it would amount to. Anybody voting against progress, don't need to be up there, because then they're not here for the children, they're not here for the employees, they're not here for the teachers, the principal, administration, superintendent, the community, or, most important, the taxpayers. But the most important of all is the children. And when you're saying that all schools are getting close to passing federal, forget state, because state is being passed, but when you start federal, that means you have just consolidated and done what your job was to do. Make sure that everybody is on a level playing field. You have to pat yourselves on the back, when you're doing his evaluation, when you're doing your own evaluation. Remember one thing. His evaluation reflects on you all. His succession reflects on you all. And that's what we're looking for. We're looking for positive progress. And I congratulate all board members for standing behind this man, for having made the right choice. Because, let me tell you one thing. I look at everybody, and I think everybody knows me. I got away from the city. To me, this is a very important subject. My first priority had always been BISD. Everybody knows it. There was a few problems at the city, so I went and attended that, and hopefully, I made a, helped it, a change. But, I had to come back, because children are priority number one to me. And I guarantee you, my daughter, everybody else's daughter, to me, I don't find one more important than the other. When I speak for one, I speak for all. And we're looking for all the children, for the kids, for all parents, to succeed. And you all are the only ones that can make that possible, and that's by keeping the right person, which is the superintendent Hector Gonzalez, up there, to keep this fleet going forward. We don't want it going backwards, we don't want it going sideways. We want positive remarks from the Brownsville Herald. We want positive remarks from Channel Four, Channel Five, not negative remarks, and I haven't seen that in a long time. So, that's why I came here, to congratulate all of y'all. Mr. Gonzalez, I thank you very much for, because I said, I trusted you, and you didn't fail me, and you didn't fail nobody else, because you have gone in the right direction. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Our next speaker is Mr. Humberto García, School Progress in General.
Good afternoon, Dr. Escobedo, board members, superintendent. My name is Humberto García, I'm a representative for Adme, local union. I'm a representative for Adme, local union. I would like to give my sincerest, uh, thank you to the Superintendent Hector Gonzalez and, uh, his administration. I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Trevino, if he attended our last membership meeting last Sunday, because we take a referendum for the first years of the superintendent performance over there, and the members vote A-plus, plus, plus. And, uh, we hope that we have Mr. Gonzalez for several more years to come, because, uh, as Mr. Trevino said, we are on the right direction. This is the first time that I see a united Board Members since a long, long time ago. So keep the gap as we're going right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. You invited me to your group some time ago, and I really appreciate that invitation. You have a good, a good group of people. Our next speaker is George Borrego, and there is no subject.
Once I get to the microphone, it's hard to keep it on one subject. Sorry. Um, we support the effort about the cohort, cohort program with the, uh, with the college, and, uh, we stress only that we do need to be sensitive for those individuals that are certified and ready to join the ranks, that we do give them the proper consideration that they deserve. And TSTA, uh, offers its support in terms of training, because as a, as a, uh, national, as a local and national, uh, and state organization, our emphasis has been on training and working with administration, instead of the opposite. So, good job. We'd like to thank Dr. Cabasos and his CNI staff for a great presentation on the CScope curriculum. I wasn't there, but Albert was very impressed with it, and I'd like to congratulate the superintendent on the, uh, new hires, because when you surround yourself with competence, competence prevails throughout the district, and it filters down. So that was very good. I noticed there were no grievances on the agenda today. That says volumes for something. We must be working well. And that leads me to the super's evaluation and pay. Uh, several years ago, and I lose track of time, because I'm getting old, and I think that happens when you get old, we lost a very good candidate for superintendent, and I can't even remember his name, only that he was from Harlingen, because we could not break the barrier. We could not break the two-hundred-thousand-dollar barrier. And we should have been there then, and we're not there now. We were there for a while, but we dropped. As I was thinking about what I was going to say, I do some shopping at Kmart, and some shopping at Dillard's, and I think when we hired, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, we picked him up at Kmart at a good price. But he has proven his worth. The district is, is going forward, well-staffed, uh, the figures are there, everything is in place. We, as an organization, although we're not a union, we love to call ourselves a union, because it makes people nervous, uh, there's an open-door policy, and we've been able to work things out and, and, and talk, and that's something that's very important, because if you expect to go forward, you must have an open-door policy with, uh, good communication. Yes, you can have comparisons on school district size, and those comparisons indicate that there should be a raise. Yes, you can have comparisons on superintendent, superintendent salaries all around the state, even down in the, in the, in the valley, and that indicates a raise. But those, those should not be considered. What you need to consider is what is happening at this district, how we are going, the stability that we're finally experiencing, which we hadn't had for many, many years, and, and we need, we need to show that appreciation, the only way that sometimes we can't. And that is with the appropriate compensation and the fringe benefits that may go with it. I was, uh, tickled pink to hear about the, uh, presentation by, uh, uh, Mr. Lorenzo, where we are in terms of salaries. We have always asked for raises for the administrators, because we are way below the state average. Why do we have a shortage in administrators? Because why do you want to go and be a principal, or an assistant principal, and work longer hours, be away from your family, and teachers, some teachers on that campus make more than you do? You need to be given the value that you are worth, because if we don't do that for our people, then you have shortages, you have problems. I ask this board today to seriously look at their consideration for the contract and the pay raise, break that barrier, take a stand, and prove the worth of the man that it's, that is running this district. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Alberto Legria, Land Clinic Stipends, Food Service, NLLB, and
I won't be talking about No Child Behind today, I'll save that for, for the next meeting. Good evening, members of the Board, President Scovado, Superintendent Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alberto Legria, the proud president of the Association of Brownsville Educators, representing over twenty-five-hundred members in this district. First, I would like to commend the Board for tabling and then rejecting the purchase of ten acres of real estate for a large sums of money. Perhaps it's a necessity for, uh, for the property to build schools, however, if we could negotiate a better price, we wouldn't object, because we understand the need for relief in the populated campuses in the surrounding areas. The contemplation of the free clinics for all BISD employees continues to be an idea that AOBE will persist to dialogue with the administration and the school board members. As we engaged in recruiting of members throughout the summer, we, the Association, introduced the scenario of having these clinics in our BISD community. An overwhelming support of the idea of having these primary care locations, quote, "would be great benefit for all the employees as a health service," unquote, was the overall response from our district employees, especially our educational, uh, our educational support professionals or our classifieds. We challenged the administration and the board members to keep the spirit alive and continue talks on this very important subject. Food service. Food service department and supervisors must refrain from promising food service employees full employment during their training, then very abruptly and unprofessionally deciding not to fulfill their promise, and then even proposing to reduce their working hours. This type of behavior from management is unacceptable, and a submissive maneuver to take advantage of our hard-working, dedicated, and loyal employees. These men and women, at times, wait for months and even years to obtain full-time employment in our district. Meanwhile, we promise and take advantage of their durable demeanor. I, I walk to school cafeterias, and I hear their pain. This district must never exploit any employee in our district for the benefit of saving a small portion of money. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, adamantly ask the central administration to investigate the actions of food service supervisors, and hopefully find a solution to their business. Substitutes for BISD. As I listen to the presentation on SEMS Programs for Substitutes, a comment made by, by the presenter raises the questions in regard to a substitute workforce. Presently, thirty college-credit hours are needed to apply and become a BIS substitute. However, in the standards, if the standards are raised to a college degree to meet the highly qualified teacher standards, a mandate constructed by No Child Behind Disaster, then our problem with, with substitutes will multiply. Presently, the district has approximately eight hundred substitutes. If the latter situation is to take effect, your substitute workforce will be cut in half, creating another bad scenario. If a campus cannot fill a classroom with a highly qualified substitute, then the campus administrator has no recourse but to use campus staff to fill those spots. Campus staff substitute is a common procedure throughout our district. So we, the Association, caution the administration and school board to study the repercussions that this new standard might bring to our district and our students. It's been some time since we've visited the district stipend benefit. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, are ready and willing to discuss preliminary recommendations, and are doing our own review to see what is best for all parties. We look forward to doing, we look forward to working with the administration, that we may find common ground that will best suit the employees and the districts as we strive to raise the stipends. And last but not least, I'd like to concur with Mr. Borrego, and Mr. Trevino, and Mr. Garcia, that, uh, and George Borrego is our regional president, by the way, and he's kind of sort of my boss, but, uh, I don't say that too loud, but since I'm saying it on TV land. But, uh, we believe that, that Mr. Gonzalez has done an excellent job in the district, and all I'm going to say to the Board is this. We're only asking you to be fair and, and justifiable, and, and when you start making the decisions of giving him a pay raise. He's proven himself, he's done a good job. We, the Association, like the job he's doing. Our schools are going in the right direction. Pay raises, of course, you guys had a lot to do with pay raises and, and the benefits that our employees get, so, again, fair and justifiable. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is our consent agenda. I have received a list from my colleagues indicating that there is a need to discuss and/or deliberate the following agenda items. We will discuss item twelve, and under closed meeting personal matters, we will discuss thirty-one, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty. So item twelve, thirty-one, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty will be discussed.
Mr. President.
Counselor?
Uh, yes, sir, I would suggest number thirty-seven as well. Uh, the employee may be available to comment.
Okay. So we will discuss, uh, item thirty-seven. Uh, I will now entertain a motion to approve the recommendation administration as reflected on the consent agenda. A motion by Mr. Gilad, seconded by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twelve. Recommend approval to submit the class size waiver petition to Texas Education Agency for grades K through fourth for the fall semester of the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight school year. Discussion, Mrs. Galvan.
Yes, uh, on this item, as I was reading through it, I did notice that there were two campuses that, uh, that is why we're going to, to ask for the waiver, and I just wanted to congratulate the superintendent, because, uh, how many campuses do we have, and how many sections? Uh, Mr. Gonzalez?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Scovado, members of the Board. Yes, we're, we're, we're very pleased with, uh, the work we've done. Uh, this is phenomenal. We have over one, one thou, one thousand and forty-five sections. That's a lot of sections, and only two sections did not meet the twenty-two to one, and those are only have twenty-three students in there. Uh, this is phenomenal. This is, this is great for our district. That means everybody's at twenty-two to one or below, except for those two sections. And my congratulations to all the staff, principals, HR, everybody that works together as a team to get it down to that number. This is really, really good. We're continuing to monitor this, and, um, this is, uh, something that, that we're real proud of, and, uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but with only two sections, and both of them only have twenty-three kids in there.
Mr. Cortez, did you have a question?
Oh, same question, Mr. ...
Mr. Galvan?
Of course, we're all excited that only two, because, uh, of so many sections and so many school district, I mean, campuses, that we only have two, and, uh, and I'm really happy, because we have a fast-growing population. I, I know in the past, we have had no examples, you know, had been zero, but this year, it's kind of unique that we're growing so fast, and be able to only have two, it's, it's, it's good. I hope we can get out of it next year.
I agree. Congratulations to anybody that participates. Mrs. Galvan?
Just one more comment. I don't know if we, uh, have pamphlets when we recruit teachers, but it's a really good recruitment, um, tool, because it's twenty-two to one.
Any other comments or questions from the Board? Again, congratulations for this, this, this good work in maintaining this, this class size. Uh, do I have a motion to approve item twelve? Motion for Mr. Cortez, seconded by Mr. Gilad. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to closed meeting, as pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 EdSec, the Board now goes to closed session. The Board reconvenes after closed session. Item number thirty-one, recommend approval of term contractual personnel for two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight school year, Assistant Administrator for Special Services, subject to receipt of all outstanding documentation. Do I have a motion to approve item thirty-one? Motion by Mr. Parrish, seconded by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item thirty-seven, recommend suspension without pay of a probationary contract employee for good cause, EAH. Do I have a motion to approve item thirty-seven? Motion by Mrs. Galvan, seconded by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty-nine, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding superintendent's contract, annual review, summative evaluation. Do I have a motion?
President.
Mr. Kalunga?
I move to raise the salary of the superintendent to two-hundred-and-five-thousand a year, in addition to a vehicle allowance of five-hundred dollars a month, and a one-year extension of the current term of the contract, all effective November first, two thousand and seven.
I have a motion, Mr. Kalunga.
Let, let me finish the last part.
I apologize.
I'm sorry. Uh, the Board and superintendent additionally agreed to amend the superintendent's contract to include written performance benchmarks approved by the Board and the superintendent to be attached in writing to the contract prior to December twenty-first, two thousand and seven, effective November first, two thousand and seven.
Motion, Mr. Kalunga. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez?
Um, thank you, Dr. Scovado. First of all, I want to thank, uh, the school board, all of you board, school board members. We can, we want to continue to work as a team of eight, uh, and I think the administrative team is well on board also, and want to continue to work for the betterment of the district and the betterment of the students in this district. So I thank you for your vote of confidence, and everything you've done for myself and this district, and we look forward to working with you for another year. Thank you very much.
Comments from the Board? Anybody? Again, congratulations, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, item number forty-one, consultation with attorney regarding pending or threatened litigation matters. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Parrish?
I move to approve attorney fees as authorized in executive session in special education case Joshua R., dash docket number, period three-three-four, dash S.E., dash zero-eight-one-seven.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Is there another motion under?
Mr. President? Yes. Uh, I move to approve attorney fees as authorized in executive session in special education case Carlos Q., dash docket number, period zero-zero-two, dash S.E., dash zero-nine-zero-seven.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Galvan. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Any other motions that are legal?
That's it.
If not, we move, uh, to announcements. Our next regular Board Meeting, the Board Trustee is on Tuesday, November sixth, two thousand and seven, here at the Administration Building at five-thirty PM. Mr. Gonzalez, any other announcements?
Yes, just a reminder to the public and to you Board Members, if you want to attend, the next Superintendent's Coffee, or the first one of the year, will be on the twenty-fifth of October, and, uh, Ms. Brown, can you tell us the place?
Yes, sir, it's the International Christian Center, uh, down on Perdiz Line Road, and it's from nine to ten-thirty AM.
So I welcome all of you, if you can, to attend that, that coffee. So I welcome all of you, if you can, to attend that, that coffee. It'll be the first one for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Powers, second by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Thank you.